Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call together the meeting of December 10th, 2018. It's 5:30. Please silence all your cell phones. If you need to have any sidebar conversations, I ask that you just go outside to the hallway. All right. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start off with a roll call. Mrs. Gomes is absent with prior notice. Mrs. Downing?
Aye.
Mr. Sumner?
Aye.
Mr. DeTerra?
Aye.
I am here myself. Okay. All right. We're going to approve the minutes, payroll and warrants. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session minutes of November 19th, 2019?
Motion to approve.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the executive session minutes of November 19th?
I'll make the motion.
Motion? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Not to be released.
And those are not to be released, the executive sessions?
The motion needs to be, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve all payroll and warrants?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. So in regards to delegation for tonight, I am going to take delegation and move it to the end of the meeting. We have some guests in the audience and they have some events taking place in their districts. So we're going to move that to the end. Otherwise, we'll proceed with the meeting. All right. Old business, updated district, 2019-20 school calendar. Dr. Bailey?
So as you know, we voted on that recently when we went over the MOA, but we should vote on it publicly. We made a couple of changes for the calendar for the rest of the year. So we added a PD day in April and a half day right before the Christmas break. So it's finalized, it's been sent out, but we should take a public vote to accept the calendar.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? No? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve or adopt the updated 2019-2020 school calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Welcome. All right. Under new business, superintendent's report, Dr. Bailey, high school presentations.
Yep. So as the committee requested, you know that we had a high school evening where we had five high schools joining us to talk about their programming. And I think the great thing about Acushnet students is that we have a choice. And we have several pathways, whether they go private or the three feeder schools. And it's Old Colony, New Bedford and Fairhaven. And at a recent school committee meeting, members had requested a presentation be done at a meeting. So we did invite all three districts to join us tonight to give us a brief presentation about their high school. And they're all three wonderful choices. They're all different. So I think it's really important that our students are able and families able to see the differences and choose what's best for them. So first up tonight, we have Fairhaven Public Schools. Mr. Baldwin, superintendent, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having us. I'll try and be as brief as I can, which is hard for me, but thank you for having us. And a number of years ago, we had an adage that said, "Become a part of our team, choose Fairhaven." And we felt if we got the right kind of people around our kids, provided them with the climate, culture and conditions, a safe and supportive environment, that no matter what the educational program, people would come to Fairhaven, choose Fairhaven and become a part of our team. And that's happened. And what I wanted you to experience tonight a little bit is an example of that. We have with us the Bernardo sisters. There's an eighth grade night going on in Fairhaven right now and they're going to, that's why I thank you so much for having us come up first. They're going to be leaving to present also there and be part of that. A number of years ago, they came to, and their family came to that event at Fairhaven High School. And we not only got Abby, who's now a senior, and her sister, we also received Dad, the physics teacher, and Mom, who's now a science teacher in the middle school. And I think what is, and we talked about our story, more than anything, it's about a culture, more than anything, it's about who we are. And I thought unplugged, it's best to just have them tell their story. So without any further ado, I'm going to have our Bernardo sisters, famous Bernardo sisters from Acushnet, come up and talk to the committee briefly.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
So hi, I'm Abby. And I'm not going to lie, my freshman year at Fairhaven was a little rough. My two best friends had gone to staying. So I was dealing with all of the normal freshman stress and fear and uncomfortableness. And on top of that, I felt kind of alone. But by the end of the year, I started to lean into the school for help with that. So I started joining more clubs and actively talking to people at lunch and meeting people before school. And now, four years later, I am the senior class president and I'm the head programmer for our robotics team that got to go to internationals last year. We were, we qualified and were able to compete at Vex Worlds in Kentucky, which was really fun. So it's just, I feel like I've finally found my place in the school. And that's not hard to do when the school is so built around culture and community and just making connections with each other. And then looking towards whatever comes next, I recently got accepted at UMass Dartmouth. And I have, I got some scholarships, I plan to pursue more scholarships. And I just, I really enjoyed my time at Fairhaven. But it also, while I was so involved in everything and having a good times, they also prepared me for college and whatever's next, which is kind of cool. And I'm really grateful.
And hi, I'm Sophia. I'm a junior at Fairhaven High School. And I am just so grateful that every day I walk into school and I know I'm walking into a safe environment and accepting environment where the students are just so nice. Everyone's so friendly. You know, you walk down the hallway and everyone has a smile on their face, they hold the door open for you, they say good morning. And it's, it's just the little things that make me truly believe that every single student in that school wants to make your day better. And it's not just the students, it's the teachers as well. They really look at you as more than just a grade. And you know that. And you know that you're important to them and that your well-being is important to them. And not only are they really understanding, they're also really great teachers that teach you things. Last year, I took AP Biology. And AP classes can be pretty stressful, but the teacher, she did everything to make it as easy as an AP class can possibly be. And she also taught a lot of us so much along the way. For the AP exam, I, every student I know actually passed the AP Bio exam, which is really incredible to me. It's a great achievement. So the school is just filled with nice people who just, they really want to make you feel good, whatever they can do to make that happen. It's pretty great.
Excellent. Thank you.
So thank you so much, ladies. And they're now heading to do a presentation at Fairhaven for robotics. They're the best. What I want to do also say is, New Bedford, Old Colony and Fairhaven are great choices for Acushnet. Academic and educational programs, whatever best meets the needs of the children of Acushnet, you have three great options. And that is, that is very true. What I just wanted to give you a flavor of before I pass it on to the next school is a little bit about our culture. So if I could go to the next slide, this is what's going on in our cafeteria right now. Most of what we do, now, I didn't prep these girls, I didn't know what they were going to say. And when Abby started off with, when I first went there, I was kind of lonely, I was like, oh God, where's she going with this? But, but we really wanted them to be unplugged. That's what's going on in our cafeteria right now. Our art students are doing a mural for Haven. But the next slide, which, I don't know if, oh, there it comes. Sorry, there's only one more slide and then the famous ending. Thank you. The next slide is what, it's about belonging. And I've said this, that at graduation, that we're very proud that we have a lot of Acushnet students at Fairhaven High School and that we feel very proud to say it many times at our graduation, that Fairhaven High School is a Acushnet high school in many ways. And so that is the draft, that was a picture taken in our cafeteria, that's going in our cafeteria. And it's just a sense that we are one, that Fairhaven and Acushnet start out together at the wee ages of whether it's Mariner Soccer or Fairhaven and Acushnet Little League or wherever it may be. And so that will be in our cafeteria. And that's put together by our students. We give them the freedom to do that kind of stuff. The last thing I want to end with is something that we shared with our faculty and staff on opening day. We've had a unified basketball team this year. And last year, we had a Special Olympics pep rally. I want you to be able to see our school. It's a four-minute video that was shown on opening day. It's our Special Olympians. It's a tour through our school. You may see people that you recognize. And I'll close once this video is over with, but we're very proud of who we are. We are about our kids, we are about our faculty and staff. They are amazing and they create great kids. So I just wanted to share that with you as we close. So we're pretty proud of who we are. And you're a major part of that, the Acushnet Public Schools, because together we make up Fairhaven High School. So if anybody has any questions, I'm here for you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? No? Well, I'll take one for the hot seat.
Sure.
All right. It's come up a couple of times and that was beautiful and tears me up. I've seen that before, the beginning part, I saw it on social media. But I guess with, majority of our students, for their own reasons, have been choosing for Haven High for the last couple of years. So I guess the question that I have is, I had heard that the program that had gone the flyer, I guess, for courses might have been different for Acushnet students, maybe particularly like in math. I just figured, why I have you, I wanted to see if that was true. And if so, if that is the case, you know, do you know if we're working on that at all? If that's something that?
What do you mean, the program? The?
So I had, I guess when our students are selecting maybe their courses for eighth grade going into high school, there's not the same courses for the Acushnet students that Hastings Middle School students? And I had just heard that. And I was wondering from a school committee perspective, if that's the case. And that's okay, that it is. But, you know, where can we be with equality because we end up all at that same place?
So I think it's come a long way. For example, you made a choice to add Spanish. Someone who's coming from Ford in the past, who didn't have Spanish, had to go into Spanish I, whereas the Hastings Middle School had a program in grade seven and eight that equated to Spanish I and they could have entered Spanish II. So that would have been Acushnet coming in a little bit behind. We continue to, it makes total sense for us to align in many ways, and everybody has their own autonomy, but align in many ways what we're offering if they're ending up in the same place. And that goes for New Bedford as well, that where students come in, they should all be coming in at the same place. So it makes a lot of sense, both in mathematics. I, I know of emails going back and forth with our middle school principal, our math department head. We are trying to be partners, but at the same time, not step on toes. So if you tell us that it's okay to, we're doing it in special needs, we're doing it in counseling, we're doing it in Spanish, we want you to have the autonomy, but we don't want your kids to come in in any, any step behind. So I think in addressing that, we are more than open to continuing the openness that we have with you and the collaboration and the cooperation. I see things flying through my office that I know math is talking, I know it was rectified in Spanish. If your kids or our kids, that the way it's been in the last three or four years, it makes a lot of sense for us to align a lot of things. And so, and that, the same thing goes for, for New Bedford. If they're coming in in grade nine, they shouldn't be behind the eight ball. So I think the coordination makes a lot of sense. I'm sure it's not there yet and it's not perfect, but I am well aware in many content areas in which it is. And we also have ways even, you know, my own kids, if they were, they're all different. I had five and they were all in different places. And there are opportunities at the high school to double up and take different courses. The sky's the limit in what can happen. But it's a great question, a good point, and I think we're probably working at it more than we ever have. So.
Excellent.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you for being a great partner.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So next up, we have Mr. Polansky from, the superintendent from Old Colony presenting. And I want to thank you for the bread.
Yes. Thank you. Just what we need.
Courtesy of the culinary department, per Mr. Baldwin's recommendation from last year and the year before. I'd like to echo Bob's sentiments. It's great to have such a collaborative group of superintendents who work so well together. It's a blessing to be part of this cohort, I'll call it. And we appreciate you providing us the opportunity to be here this evening. I'd like to start with a quick overview of our Old Colony students. Old Colony has a 99% graduation rate, just to share some facts. Currently, we did the math today, a 97.65% attendance rate for this year. It was a 97.5% rate last year. We've partaken in significant contribution for our sending communities and collaboration with our sending communities. Some of the Acushnet activities have included a project that's currently in place with Pope Park. We're in the estimate phase of a design and build of an outdoor facility upgrade. That work is all done by students. Our CAD students are currently in the design phase of, design and build of a shedding clubhouse for the golf course. We've participated collaboratively with Ford Middle School on two consecutive STEM days that were funded through Mass Hire of Greater New Bedford. And a literacy through sport initiative where the Old Colony student athletes have read to the Acushnet Elementary School students, which is a big hit. Our staff with students at Acushnet Elementary always request to be the chaperones. We've introduced some early college programming and engineering and entrepreneurship where our students are able to secure a bachelor's from UMass Dartmouth in a three-year period of time in an engineering focus, and 30 credits in early college entrepreneurship to complement a skill set that they earn in their respective program. All 13 vocational programs have a minimum of 12 possible college credits available to students for articulation at the post-secondary level. And students graduate with industry-recognized licenses and credentials, which certainly differentiates them in the field when it's time to either enroll, enlist, or gain successful employment. A lot of people will ask what's new at Old Colony. Our engineering program is new in terms of the pathway that we've created with Bristol and UMass Dartmouth for a three-years, three-year bachelor's degree. When we see something in the field and we do pay close attention, we try to copy it. This is not our invention, it's something that Diamond piloted with Bristol and UMass Dartmouth. And as soon as we caught wind of it, we called and asked how we could become a part of it. The 30-credit early college entrepreneurship program is, we're five courses into that. So students, some students have earned as many as 15 college credits to date, and it continues. Actually, there's a class tonight as we speak. We've added advanced placement coursework in language and composition, English literature, calculus and computer science. In the last three years, we've secured over a million dollars in competitive grants. Students have earned over a half a million dollars in co-op wages over the past two years. Our lobby was recently renovated by our Old Colony students. If you walked in a few years ago, admittedly, I felt when I came for my interview there, I was entering 1970 and felt like I was in the midst of the Brady Bunch. I was just waiting for Marcia to yell, "Ooh, my nose." When you walk in now, it's a beautiful testament to the work done by our students. It's a really renewed look, it has a college feel to it, and the work was done by our students. Five different programs contributed to the lobby facelift. It's exciting. And we now have lights on our athletic playing fields. The lights were doing great part to many donations made by partners and installed by our Old Colony students. And Matt Trahan, Acushnet resident, was recently named State Athletic Director of the Year. I put that in there because he's an Acushnet resident. And we're very proud that a tiny high school in Massachusetts could have a staff member recognized as the Athletic Director of the Year. We're proud of him and appreciative of the work that he does. He's a wonderful asset to our programming. This is a picture of our lobby and the makeover without, without photos of the students. So there are now four-foot by three-foot pictures of the 13 different programs that decorate the walls. But the newspaper had asked for a photo prior to the posters being, not the posters, the acrylics being put up. But this was student-created. The sofa in the middle of the ceiling, that round piece was welded by our metal fabrication students. The walls and all of the carpentry was done by the carpentry department. The symbol on the floor and the design of the sofa was created by the graphic design program. The layout was created by a CAD student. So one of our CAD students actually created the blueprint for the lobby and we worked from that. On the right-hand side, I share this to dispel rumors. We focus on the three Es, employment, enlistment, or enrollment. And many people will ask, can your students go to college? John Ferrera is no longer with Spotify. He did attend Brown University, he's a 2009 graduate. He's with Google now. He moved from Spotify to Google. We're proud of his accomplishments, but we're proud of all of the accomplishments of our students. I put together a 20-page overview of all of, not all of, but many Acushnet residents. And every Monday, we highlight a graduate online and via social media so that we can create models for our aspiring students, for our current students, and pull our alumni base into what it is that we do because we're very proud. So this morning, I just put together, I pulled 20 Acushnet students, they just happened to, there happened to be 20 in my files from Acushnet. There were more, I just thought 20 was probably enough of a taste. To share with you the many different successes that we've seen, there are police officers, there are people in the armed forces, there are some folks who work for Gilat, there are people who own their own companies. But there's a multitude of successes represented in that packet for you. And we share it in the interest of letting people know that there are a multitude of options when you intend Old Colony. You're not limited to just a single program. What I'd like to do now is I'd like to introduce Jack Roy. Jack is a town resident and a former student of the Acushnet Public School System. He's currently a sophomore at Old Colony in our culinary arts program. And he wrote this. When he's not in the kitchen, he enjoys playing basketball for our JV basketball team at Old Colony and holds down two part-time jobs in the food service industry. Before I call him up, I'll tell you that last week, we had a dinner for selectmen and town administrators from a number of our sending districts. And prior to the evening, I said to my assistant, who's also an Acushnet resident, "We need to find a student to join me at the Acushnet School Committee meeting. Do you have anybody in mind?" And she said, "Let me think about it." And then we went to dinner. And I walked in and Jack was there with a black bow tie, a white dress shirt, greeting every single person who walked into the dinner, like you're at a five-star restaurant. And I turned to my assistant and she said, "I know, that's our guy." And I said, "Yeah, that's definitely our guy." And I said to him, "Hey, can you join me at the school committee meeting in Acushnet?" And he said, "Of course." Our students are not a number, they're a name, and we live by that. I couldn't be more proud to introduce Jack. He'll offer comments and closing comments. I want to thank you again for the opportunity to work with the youth of Acushnet, the staff of Acushnet and the community members of Acushnet. It's an absolute honor. Thanks for having us this evening. And Jack, the floor is yours.
Good evening and thank you, everyone, for this opportunity to speak tonight. As a product of Acushnet Public Schools, I feel I had a great education to start because of many caring and dedicating teachers that I had at AES in Ford Middle. By the time eighth grade rolled around, it was the biggest time in my life at the moment to pick a high school and for many of my friends as well. Like many of my friends, I struggled to decide where to go, but ultimately, I chose Old Colony because I wanted a vocational experiment, experience, and it felt like a great fit for me. Well, two years later, I stand here to tell you, Old Colony is more than I could have ever hoped for it to be. A great staff and dedicated teachers that encourage us to be our best, new friends from other communities, and a chance to work in a trade that has helped me have confidence and abilities to grow as a person. Much like my experience in Acushnet, OC is a very small school. OC is a very small school where everyone knows everyone and everyone looks out for everyone. The ancient Greek philosopher Aristotle once said, "Educating the mind without educating of the heart is no education at all." This quote perfectly sums up my feelings of Old Colony and why I am grateful for the opportunity to go to school there.
Anybody have any questions? No? Thank you, Jack.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Jack, and Mr. Polansky. Thank you again.
Thank you.
And last but certainly not least, New Bedford Public Schools. I believe Joyce Paulo is coming up, and I'm not sure who else you can introduce if anyone else goes up.
Good evening. I'm Joyce Cardoza, the assistant headmaster over at New Bedford High School.
Good evening, I'm Joyce Cardoza, the Assistant Headmaster over at New Bedford High School. With me tonight is Ms. Karen Tredup, the Assistant, the Deputy Superintendent of New Bedford Public Schools, and Chris Cummings, who is our Manager of Career Technical and Vocational Education at the high school. So, we have a video to show you tonight that is produced by our students in that class, a video production class, and it really highlights our programs, the abilities of our students, but really, it showcases that we embody the true meaning of a comprehensive high school. I heard the other two high schools talk about that feeling of family, and I believe at New Bedford High School, oftentimes, whether you graduated in 1970 or last year, you refer to yourself as, you know, part of the Whaler family, and that really still holds true today for our students. They feel that, they live that. You know, we are a high school that accepts every student from every walk of life. We have many students from other countries, we have students who come from many communities. We're a school of choice, so we have students from Dartmouth, Akushnet, Fairhaven, and I think that what's really important is that our families in all of the communities really educate themselves and feel well-informed when it's time for their child to make a decision as to what high school they should go to. So we had the pleasure of having our eighth graders from Ford Middle School visit back in October, and they got to experience a really cool showcase that was put on by our students, and they learned all about the, you know, 20 AP programs that we have, the AP Capstone Diploma, the Academy of Honors, the theater, the drama, the AP Arts stu-, uh, AP Art Studio classes, the NAF academies, and what certifications students can now graduate with. That helps them to have, you know, an edge in the, in the field that they wish to go into. So I hope they enjoyed that. We got some really positive feedback from the students. We currently have some Akushnet students enrolled in our Academy of Honors, and they are thriving and enjoying that experience, and we have more students currently applying as well, and we have other students in our general, general ed classes as well. So I hope you enjoy the video, and then we will be available for any questions based on what you see. Thank you.
This is New Bedford High School. More than 2,400 students and a school culture dedicated to the values we share as Whalers: responsibility, respect, determination, pride, and creativity. Our strength is in the diversity of our experiences, interests, and the paths we choose at New Bedford High. With a tradition of excellence, New Bedford High School is accredited by the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. Our school offers 20 advanced placement courses, the most in the region, including the coveted AP Capstone Diploma Program. Also setting New Bedford High School apart from other schools is the National Academy Foundation Model, which offers students the opportunity to choose a pathway within one of several academies. Hospitality and Tourism is our latest academy, where students prepare for careers in event planning and facilitation. Our other academy offerings include engineering, information technology, health sciences, and finance, plus our own Academy of Arts and Humanities. New Bedford High School provides state-of-the-art, advanced technical learning laboratories to support its career technical and STEM curriculum. Our finance laboratory replicates the floor of a Wall Street investment company. Complete with advanced computer systems, a stock ticker, and 4K clever touch monitors, this space provides finance and business students the opportunity to engage in project-based activities intended to prepare students for careers and financial services. Our state-of-the-art biotechnology lab is the latest significant addition to the STEM-focused offerings for students who are interested in pursuing careers in science. The biotech lab and biotechnology training program has enabled the high school to implement the Amgen Biotech Experience Lab Series and is furnished with the latest biotechnology apparatus, equipment, tools, and supplies required of experimental protocols used by real-world scientists. New Bedford High School was recently awarded a $275,000 grant to construct a robotics laboratory to support our engineering program, construction of which will begin in the spring of 2020. Other pathways include certificate programs that give students the opportunity to graduate as certified nursing assistants and childcare providers. New pathways are currently in the planning stages, including a marine technology program supported by our recent $30,000 statewide innovation pathway planning grant award. Our eye is on the future at New Bedford High, and we've invested in significant technology upgrades across our school. In addition to interactive whiteboards in all classrooms, every student has their own laptop computer, making the teaching and learning at New Bedford High even more engaging, while developing 21st-century skills through the use of technology. New Bedford High School's tradition of excellence extends beyond academics. Our music program, including marching band, jazz band, show choir, and more, consistently places in regional and state competitions, evidence of our determination with the many awards to prove it. Our drama and musical productions showcase our commitment to creativity, with significant participation and well-attended productions every year thanks to the dedication of our students and staff involved in producing these many events. Nothing stirs our pride as much as Whaler sports. Division One athletic teams that are a key part of our school culture. Student athletes represent New Bedford High School across the state, and again, our diversity of opportunities offers a huge selection of sports, with something for every athlete, including the use of our brand-new, state-of-the-art weight and training room. Making New Bedford High stand out, the nation's oldest JROTC program continues to excel at our school, with students participating in JROTC, learning key traits of perseverance, duty, tradition, and respect for all. Students at New Bedford High feel a sense of responsibility to our school, and this contributes to our work together on community service, extracurricular clubs, and activities, and our own unique events such as Mr. Whaler's Pageant and Spirit Week across our school. With pathways for every student, a wide array of academic opportunities and extracurricular activities that appeal to the goals and interests of a variety of students, this is New Bedford High School. A tradition of excellence and a commitment to ensuring every graduate leaves our school fully prepared for college, career, and a future of success.
So I know that video highlights a lot of what we have to offer, but just to recap on a few things, we are a one-to-one high school, and we really utilize technology to advance our students and to meet the needs of all students. We have added to our NAF Academy tracks, and Mr. Cummings can speak more to any specific questions you might have about those certifications and programs. The finance lab is a new addition to us this year that the students are very excited about in, in that program. We also have dual enrollment programs, eighth grade to high school, as well as college dual enrollment programs through BCC and UMass Dartmouth. And many of our courses that students take allow them, because we have so many AP offerings, allow them to complete a significant amount of courses prior to enrolling in college. So the Academy of Honors pathway allows students to enter, starting through the eighth-grade dual enrollment program, and advancing through, and some of our students are able to complete an entire year of college before they leave the high school. So those are just some of the things I wanted to highlight, but I'd like to open it up for questions, if anybody has any questions based on what they saw.
Oh, that was a great video, thank you.
Yeah, the kids did a nice job.
Yeah.
And when we, when we came to Ford to do the, the showcase night, we brought some students that, that spoke and were from Akushnet, and I think, you know, are really passionate about what you see there in the video as well, but it's nice to see what the kids can produce.
Great. Does anyone have any questions? No? No, you did a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for having us. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Coming. Thank you.
So I would like to highlight that Akushnet is working with all three districts. I know Mr. Plansky said it, but just to echo his comments, this, the three of us work very collaboratively on many different things. I know in New Bedford, everything that was talked about, those are opportunities for Akushnet students as well. I know right now, our fourth and fifth graders are bussed over to C-Lab. They have that experience right now. We're looking to do more things that make sense for high school students or for our middle school students going into high school. So we're always looking for opportunities. Fairhaven, you heard how we collaborate with our PD, looking at our coursework. And Old Colony, we have students in here every month, they're working on video projects. We just had the basketball team practice with their varsity today, so we'll post some pictures on social media later on, but again, it's just been a great collaboration with all three schools, and I'm so happy that our students have a choice, and they have three wonderful choices. And I just encourage the families to take a look at each one and obviously pick the best fit for their child. So I just want to thank every superintendent and person who came out tonight. I appreciate the presentations, so thank you all.
Thank you very much. It was wonderful.
Yeah. The next thing we have is Personnel Matters, a very short report, as you can see, and it all stems around nursing, so in the future, in the near future, and also next year, we have a retirement, but we will be looking for certified school nurses. So other than that, I don't know if you have any questions about the personnel report?
No.
Okay. And next up, Mr. Oliver is going to give us an update regarding the status of technology
Well, good evening, everyone, and I'll lead off by, I'm a proud Ford Middle School graduate and a proud New Bedford High School graduate, so I will cheer on my alamata. Madam Chair, members of the committee, thank you for giving me this opportunity to update you on the state of technology in the district. I know this typically happens once a year, a lot of the things may be repetitive to some of you, so I apologize upfront, but I'll just get right to it, get started. So the Technology Department's made up of four people, including myself. We have two technicians, one full-time technician, Ken Pamplona. He's 35 hours a week and he's full year. I also have another technician who's part-time, and she is only school year. I bring this up because, as you can see in your, in your attachments around the screen that you received in your packet, that their responsibilities include responding to all work audits and user troubleshooting, repair of PCs, printers, Chromebooks, all aspects of Google for Education, network management, and much more. I, I can't stress to you enough how much technology is rapidly expanding. It seems like every year, we're growing and growing with technology as a whole, not just this, not just Akushnet. This is not unique to Akushnet. This is across, across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts when I speak to my colleagues. There's just expectations that come for reliability, as well as, you know, just devices. Right now, I think the number-one priority, it's really devices, getting the devices into the hands of as many students as possible, because testing is going online now. We have a lot of teachers utilizing Chromebooks, devices, computer labs for testing, and just their regular textbooks, and just the regular day-to-day teaching. So I can't stress to you enough that really, the, which, in the, I'm jumping ahead of myself a little bit, but in the springtime, I'll be looking to try to propose making the part-time technician Kathleen full-time. But that's just, that's neither here nor there, that's in the future, but I did just want to plug that in. In addition to the two technicians, I also have Kathy Shabbat. She's our full-time, year-round registrar and data analyst. She takes in all of the new registrations, kindergarten registrations, all our new registrations that come in throughout the year on a rolling basis, prues residency, which is, she's really diligent about that, and I'll talk a little bit about that piece as well, the residency. In addition, she inputs all that information into our Aspen database, and as you remember, we went live with Aspen last, the beginning of last school year. It's been extremely successful between the, remember, it's not just the student database, but it's also our special education database, and we're hoping, unfortunately, with the turnover with some nursing staff, we weren't able to roll the healthcare piece of Aspen out this year. I'm hopeful that in the future, maybe next year, we can look at rolling that, rolling the healthcare piece out, primarily because it's a centralized database and instead of it's one-stop shopping, instead of having different databases, different programs for this and for that information, it's all in one. So right now, prior to Aspen, we had our student database that pulled up student addresses, student demographics, student emergency contacts, then we had a several, separate database that handled all our special education data, our IEPs, our 504s, and it was, to some extent, it was cumbersome, especially for the special education staff, so that's been consolidated. We're hoping to also move forward with the, with the healthcare piece in the near future. But Kathy handles all of that. She handles it with ease, in addition to the Department of Education state reporting, those happen three times a year. It's, it's a miracle that some of the data actually gets sent through because of the amount of data that Desi is looking for these days. Between 52 fields of data that they're collecting on just our regular SIMs, they collect 52 pieces of information for our, our students. In addition, they collect all of the student course schedules, so every single class, every single level of a class that a student has taken, they're collecting that information. In addition, they're collecting approximately two dozen fields in our educators. Anyone who is in an instructional capacity, in addition to, in addition to secretarial, tech, uh, technology, central office support staff, they're collecting the information on everything from teacher evaluation, it's just they assign a numerical number to it, so it's very, it's very simple in that respect. There's four fields, so there's four, four different pieces for that. They're collecting certificate information, degree information, attendance, they're really, and this is, happens three times a year, so it's quite a bit of information to get across in addition to school safety discipline reports and lots of other reporting that takes place on a regular basis. She also acts as the point person for, and I, I'm still assisting her with this because there's still, both of us have a lot to learn. There, there's still, every time there's an email or a phone call for new staff that come in, she has to assign new staff roles, security roles in Aspen, so, so there's a lot to it, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank Kathy, Ken, and Kathleen for all the hard work that they, they do in this district. And last but not least is myself, I oversee the Technology Department, both the school, both here, the school department, as well as all the town buildings, all aspects of service switches, wireless, wired networks, building security, all our databases. I'm the final person to certify state reporting, our social media sites that I'll talk about shortly, our website, and like the three other staff employees, and much more. So approximately 90% of our classrooms in the district, or 90% of our rooms in the district have the following, and some may have one thing but not the other, but overall, 90% of them have interactive, some type of interactive, uh, smart boards or Promethean boards or, or interactive projectors, the front row sound systems, the, the teacher microphones that teachers wear to amplify their, their voice, document cameras. Typically, classrooms have a minimum of two student PCs, most of them have more, either laptops or Chromebooks or carts, and then a teacher PC or laptop in addition to the classrooms. And the reason why it's not 100% is because as we've gone through the years, as we've replaced technology or installed technology, there's been room moves every couple of years, so it's very time-consuming and difficult and expensive, really. The bottom line is, it costs money to reinstall or purchase a new front row system for a vacant classroom that we didn't have, or a vacant room that we had, that was vacant a couple of years ago. So we're slowly getting there, it's a work in progress, but I'm hoping to come back to you next year after, maybe we get some town meeting funding for, to show 100% of the rooms have all of the, all of those devices. Just, just a brief overview, not really so much technology, but it is something that we kind of oversee, comes on my budget. Renaissance Learning, this is software that is across the district, that's being utilized across the district. Renaissance- across the district. Renaissance Learning includes our Star Reader, Accelerated Reader, Accelerated Math. These are all programs that the teachers typically use on a daily basis. Lexia Learning, we have grown Lexia Learning from originally, really just at the, the younger grades. We had, this past year, we went from a subscription-based license to a site-based license at the elementary school. So, now, every single student has access to utilize Lexia, both here in the district and at home. I can't speak to how many students might be using it at home, but that is an option for some of our students. Symphony Math, that is another program that thanks to a lot of help from a lot of people. It's been growing across, and I know that Mrs. Beck and Mr. Johnson's making it a priority this year in some grades at the elementary level to really push Symphony Math. In addition to our Google Education Suite, which is our Google Docs, Google Drive, that we're really, right now, I can solidly say that grades three through eight all have Google accounts. So, they're able to access all the, the full suite of Google products, with the exception of being able to email from outside of our domain. I don't allow that. So, just to backtrack a little bit, just to, just to mention this, and include, in addition to all the laptops, or all the, all the classroom technology, we have several computer labs here at the middle school. We have a computer lab here, right in the back of the library. We have Ms. Kotay's teaching lab. We have Mr. Roy's teaching lab. And we have an open lab that's available for sign-out in the back of this wing. In addition to which, I'll be talking a little bit about a number of Chromebook carts. And then next door, we have the, we have a computer lab in the library. We have Jean Downey's teaching lab, and we also have an open lab called Literacy Lab over there, that teachers can sign out and go in. So, little exciting here. As you remember, and as you probably are well aware from some of the new technology, we were recently were, through an agreement with Mr., thanks to Mr. Noble before he left, our former town administrator, he appointed me to a, to be a member of the Cable Advisory Committee. And working with the Cable Advisory Committee and Mr. Noble, we were able to secure approximately $70,000 in funding to install our new television studio that is being used by our media, our Media Club students. And hope, I really have high hopes that we can really bring it in and merge it in with some of our programs here at the middle school, in addition to the two cameras that you see hanging in the back of the library, the one behind you, a new projector. So, that was approximately $70,000, in addition to, I know that this is, this is a picture of the studio that's in that room, right through that glass. We have a green screen there, in addition to, you see the, the studio cameras, and we have all our switching and audio equipment there. And I was just with Ms. Kotay this afternoon with Media Club, and we were doing some cool green screen effects. And she's going to, our hope is that in the next couple of months, two to three months, is that we're going to try to put together, start slow, some programming to push out to our, our educational access channel. So, it's not just, and I know that people, I'm sure, love to tune in and watch School Committee on replay every day, but our hope is that we'll be able to start turning off some program, not, programming not only of our, our students here in the TVs, in the Media Club, but also of more, more so of our concerts, our sporting, our basketball teams, our soccer teams, a lot of the sports. So, because it's one thing to, you know, put it up on, take a picture of someone, put it on Facebook or Twitter, but it's another thing for them to tune into TV, to their television at home and say, "Hey, Mom and Dad, that's me up, that's me up on the TV." So, that, some exciting things coming down the line with that. And I will, that's just another picture there, close-up of our, our switching equipment. So, I just wanted to bring this to your attention, because I do think it's important, because we have the opportunity to have additional staffing with this. So, we're currently in the process, the town is in the process of renegotiating our cable contract. So, in order for cable companies to come into municipalities, they have to, the town, the municipality has to agree to renew their cable contract, basically to allow them to run, to operate a cable system in their city or town. So, our 10-year contract's coming up for renewal. Myself is on it, along with probably, I represent the school department, and there's, and this is, I think, the first time in several contracts, maybe, I'm not sure. Mr. Green in the back room may be able to answer this better than I can, but be represented at the table. So, it just shows that there's a lot of collaboration between the school department and the town, and this goes back to Brian Noble. So, we just held our public ascertainment hearing last week, which was basically a public hearing, kind of like the, the budget public hearing that School Committee has. It has to be posted in the paper. Of course, there was, I think, no one that showed up at the hearing. But anyway, we still had it, and we, we ironed out a lot of ideas. And basically, the ascertainment hearing was an opportunity for town members, or not town, cable advisory members, to come up with a wish list. Comcast, a representative from Comcast, government sector was there, in addition to a stenographer that was taking all the notes for the official record, so it would be on the record with Comcast. So, my number-one wishlist item, along with a couple of other people from the town, there's some good discussion going on, is a full-time staff member that would be funded by the town's cable contract. That position would be shared between the school department and the town. So, it would be basically a point person, which I really think is important. And I do want to go on the record as saying that I think Mr. Golda, as well as Mr. Lopes, has done a phenomenal job with the Cable Advisory Committee to date. They've been able to turn out a lot of great programming and a lot of, you know, and save a lot of money. That being said, I think it's important that we really, if caught, so essentially, the big piece of this that I'm missing here to tell you is that because we allow Comcast to operate in our municipality, they essentially give the town approximately $100,000 a year to be spent solely on cable access. In addition, there is some capital money that gets given to the town upfront. So, essentially, what we're looking at is in somewhere in the ballpark of 100,000, of $100,000. So, that, and that's really kind of what we've been given in the past, anyway. That being said, I think that's, it's more than reasonable to put that wishlist item on there. And I'm hoping to come back to you in the springtime with some, some more information and maybe a decision, because obviously, this would have to go, the final decision-maker on any of this would be the Select Board. They oversee the Cable Advisory Committee, so it would have to go in front of them. But I think this would be a great opportunity, once again, great collaboration, that we can work together, this person will work together with the school department, work as a point person, a trainer for our teaching staff, for our educators here. In addition, the ultimate outcome, increase educational programming on cable access channels, as well as social media, sports, music, talk shows. So, just so I can make it clear to anyone that may be watching this in the future at home, is that I'm, everyone that is currently, because there's, there's a number of meetings that take place every week at, in town, whether it's conservation, Select Board, School Committee, there's always meetings. This person would basically look as somewhat, be the person to schedule those people to come out and videotape the meetings and so on. So, some good news, I think. I think at the very least, we have an opportunity to work collaboratively with the town on this. So, improving communication with families. Since Dr. Bailey's come on board, she's kind of made it a priority that she would, really wants to, you know, there's so many good things happening here in the Acushnet Public Schools, and we really want to get that out to our community and to our parents. So, as you're well aware, approximately a month, month and a half ago, we launched Facebook, we launched our official Facebook account. We sent home a email blast, I believe, last week, inviting people to join. We wanted to give it several weeks to make sure, to see how it was going. And it's been, it's been pretty successful, and we're trying to, you know, there, it's just tough getting, there's so many good things going on, there really is, that just people are sending myself or Dr. Bailey that information, and we're getting it out there onto Facebook, onto Twitter. Remember, we have our website, that's like a year and a half, only a year and a half old now. In addition, we all, as you remember, we also have our One Call Now. That's our, for lack of a better term, our robo-collar sends out, it also is able to send out text alerts and phone calls, in addition to email. So, as you can, you know, that's four, there's four bullets right up there that I'm looking at, that we're communicating with parents and with the community, which is really important, because we want to keep everyone informed, especially of the great things that are happening right in the classroom level. That's just the screenshot of our website. I will just mention that the, the heading across the Acushnet Public Schools Kids Win, that is a bulletin board that was courtesy of our Nutrition Director, Jean Sheridan, that I believe can be still found in the back hallway by the superintendent's entrance. So, it's, she, I told her she should be a graphic design person in another life. So, our biggest challenge, we don't, we do have some challenges here in the Acushnet, and it's keeping up with the technology demand and constant evolution of devices and software. So, I just grabbed this off my administrative console in Google, that we currently have 381 devices in use, Chromebook, I should mention, be specific, Chromebooks in use in the district. Just a couple of, really, that's in the past two, two and a half years. We started off with zero two and a half years ago, when we launched, originally launched that one-to-one program. In addition, we have over 550 traditional PCs and laptops. Those are our computer labs. Those are laptop carts, all the different computers in offices. So, it, it's just so difficult, because the, it's really, it's an explosion of technology with the Chromebooks, in which, as we're going to come to the, in another slide, I'm going to talk about how I need to already look to upgrade our Wi-Fi. Our Wi-Fi is already five, I believe, around five years old, and it wasn't designed for the amount of devices that are in, it's fine here in the middle school, because it was designed for one-to-one here with that intention, even though we're not doing it right now. However, at the elementary level, it definitely needs to be improved. So, that being said, I've gotten a lot of questions this year from both parents, teachers, staff. So, what happened to our one-to-one Chromebook program that was put in place two and a half years ago? So, originally, those Chromebooks were, the initial batch of Chromebooks were about 100, 100. They were part of a grant program, the E-Rate program, money reimbursement. Excuse me. So, that being said, that was the intention, to give it a try with that. In the first, was part of a pilot program, was originally purchased with grant money. The first 18 months, so first year and a half, it was really successful. We had a very limited number of damaged machines. I don't know what happened after that. The following year, last year, last fall, within, within the first couple of months of school, we had over a dozen Chromebooks, like, damaged, dropped, screens shattered. The cases cracked. And these, the ones that we got last year were the education edition, which is the edition newer than the previous year, and they were supposed to be even more durable. Well, it continued to, to climb, the damage, and even things that we could repair. Some things we can repair, some things we had to send out. If we send a Chromebook out because of the screens damaged, if the keyboard, which we're having that issue right now with, we're trying to track down who, the student that, who may be doing it, but if you pop the keys off the keyboard, and then if you break the little attachments on there, you got to replace the whole keyboard. So, it's approximately 90 to $100 to replace a Chromebook keyboard, because it's either that, or it's about an hour and a half of human capital, hours of human capital. So, that was the frustrating piece. We tried offering insurance. We went the insurance route. We offered insurance to parents, and for those parents that did not pick up the insurance and their student's Chromebook ended up broken, we billed them. We sent home an invoice. And we found, I found Ken and Kathleen growing more and more frustrated with, essentially, we were either one, like a UPS Ship Center, in which we're packaging up Chromebooks to be sent out to repair, to be repaired, or it's just a matter of taking them in, filing an insurance claim with the insurance company. So, I listened to them. I listened to both sides, the teachers, and I ultimately, this year, because of, there's only one and a half technicians and myself, we just could not keep up with the demand of the, of the damaged Chromebooks. So, we had to go the route of the cart model. So, they're still here. They haven't gone anywhere. Remember that the one-to-one Chromebook program was in just grades seven and eight. Grades five and six did not have access to Chromebooks. So, what we did was, currently, grade eight has two Chromebook carts, so two class sets. Grade seven has two class sets. In grades five and six, each have a class set, and we're in the process of turning out another class set with that same batch of Chromebooks that were part of the one-to-one program. You know, I know it's frustrating. I didn't want to have to go back, backwards, because I know, you know, we were, we were not the first in the area to do one-to-one, but we weren't the last in the area to do one-to-one either. And I hear this from my colleagues, that it's just so frustrating, the, the damage piece, because there's no easy, easy way about that. And this idea of, maybe we do one-to-one and keep them in school, because a lot of the damage was happening between school and home, backpacks crushing, we've seen, we, being put, thrown in their lockers. We tried to be, and I know that the teachers, seventh and eighth grade, did a tremendous job trying to, you know, reinforce these rules and these strategies, but ultimately, we're, we're at the cart model right now. It's not to say that a couple of years from now, if they come out with a super deluxe Chromebook that's shock-proof from like five feet, five or six feet, that we can't go back and look at this again. So, some of our upcoming projects, that picture that you're looking at is of our server room here in the middle school. That is our, our head-end room for both schools. So, we just recently installed a brand-new alarm system in the middle school here, that the, it replaced the original one that was part of the building renovation. Up next, and I would say, hopefully over Christmas break, we'll be installing the new alarm system at the elementary school. That was part of capital money on a town meeting article. In addition, which was also part of town meeting, was $25,000 for technology. And that $25,000 is going to take care of replacing 10 projectors or in, in interactive whiteboards with new 65-inch touch panels. So, that's really where, and you heard, I believe, Mr. Plansky's talking about how clever, a clever touch panel in the front lobby, he may have said. But essentially, think of it as a giant iPad. It's a, it's a giant 65-inch touchscreen TV, is what it is. So, it's nice in which, big problem, our bulbs, our bulbs are starting to go, and with some projectors, bulbs are almost as expensive as a new projector. So, we're going to be, we're slowly, I just actually, we just purchased the first one. Before I go and spend the full $25,000 on one specific brand, I'm trying, I'm, Mrs. Cavallo in grade eight, her projector just, just went. So, she will be the first one getting a new touch panel. So, we're going to see, and I expect to get that in over vacation. We're going to see how that goes, how she likes it, and we'll decide from there what the next step is. But I hope sometime over the winter to have the, the 10 interactive touch panels installed. And this is something that I'm going to continue to ask for each year in capital monies, to continue to replace projectors with touch panels, because they really should be in every single room. Really, $25,000, it's really not enough, because I'd love to get this rolled over a little quicker. So, we can talk about that during the budget process. But definitely expect at least the $25,000 to continue to start, to continue that cycle of replacing panels. As everyone knows, especially today, that if you call the school, sometimes the lines are staticky. Sometimes, last week or the week before, the phone lines don't work at all. And that is due to Verizon. They've made it quite clear that the lines out here are 75 to 100 years old, the copper that's on the poles, and they have no intention of replacing that copper. And because FiOS is not coming to Acushnet, we, that's not an option for us. So, we are going to be moving all our phone lines. We do have some Comcast digital phone lines, but all our phone lines are going to be moving over to vertical communications, which is what's called SIP, digital trunking, which is essentially, right now, I think we have 22, 23 phone lines between the two buildings and the central office in special education. What we're going to do is, we're going to drop that down to, say, 10 to 15 phone lines. Those phone lines will not have a specific number attached to them. So, the, the number will be attached by the originating phone. So, if Dr. Bailey makes a phone call, or if I make a phone call, it'll come from the superintendent's line, or the business office line. But if someone at the school makes a phone call, it'll be coded, so it's coming from the elementary school, the the elementary school to the middle school. So it'll actually, believe it or not, be a cost savings, and we will, knock on wood, have no more problems with our static phone lines every, every single time it rains out. So I know it can be frustrating, it's actually irritating to myself and I think even Kristen and Dr. Bailey, that you make, pick up the phone and you're like, you can't hear the person, and I end up calling them back on my cellphone. So I have, I have high hopes that those will be much better, and I'll be switched over. And the other nice thing is that it'll be, it's the same system that Town Hall has, and as it is, we're already able to, right now, between the school department and Town Hall and Parting Ways, everyone's on four-digit extensions. You can pick up a classroom phone and actually dial right into a office at Town Hall, and we're, in the next month or so, we're going to bring in the Council on Aging over to the same phone system, so they'll be part of that system. So it just makes sense. So future projects, like I said, continuation of projected replacement with the touch panels. The biggie, refresh of Wi-Fi networks, replace aging access points with new ones with better signals and more speed. I'm anticipating that this is going to qualify for E-Rate reimbursement. So essentially, if, I got a rough estimate last year to replace all the access points in the district, we're looking at approximately, the Wi-Fi network is approximately $70,000 to $80,000. That's the number where we're really looking at. With E-Rate, our current reimbursement rate with the federal government is 60%, so 60% of that cost will be reimbursed to us by the federal government. It's a grant process, and every, every rate payer of a phone actually pays that. That's a universal service access charge at the bottom of your bill, and that's how that program is funded. So I have hope that, that would be the only way that I would even be comfortable, you know, talking to the Budget Subcommittee or bringing this to Town Meeting, would be to be able to say that we're getting 60% of the projects being reimbursed to us by the, by the federal government. And last but not least, Chromebooks for-
Is that guaranteed, that reimbursement, or you said it was a grant process?
Yeah, so essentially, the way it works is, the, really, that's a good question. The reimbursement rate is based on our free reduced lunch, our low, I forget the new terminology for it, but our low-income population. So our reimbursement rate last year was at 60%, because every year, I, our internet gets subsidized by this grant, every, I apply for this grant every year, and our internet gets subsidized. So our internet's $22,000 for the district, and that's a fiber optic connection. Out of that $22,000, 60% gets reimbursed, and what I do with that 60, it has to be built into your budget, though. We have, in case they don't, there's a, even if there's a clerical error sometimes in the application, they will deny you. So that money's got to be put aside, you have to certify that that money is put aside in the budget, the full amount. And what I do, since I've been here working with Mrs. Flynn, is that that money goes right back into technology. The reimbursement, the 60% on buying Chromebooks, where I'm buying more technology, but I kind of, at this point, I really rely on that 60% to do a refresh of some type of the technology. So it's not guaranteed, it's kind of like an RFP process, I have to, I have to basically put an RFP out there on the government website, vendors then, I then solicit bids from vendors on the proposal, I tell them what I'm looking for, they send me proposals, I will go with a vendor, and then I will submit it to, it's called USAC, Universal Services Administration Company, and then they will, they'll take it from there and they'll, they'll make that decision. So the decision is usually, I usually get decision before Town Meeting, so that's, that's my hope.
Wondering the timeframe on that?
Yep, absolutely. And like I said, last but not least, Chromebooks. I'd like to see more Chromebooks. Right now, we have, the teachers that were a part of the one-to-one program, in addition to our sped teachers, have Chromebooks. So I think it's only right, and I think it only makes sense that anyone, I'd really like to see any, any teacher that wants a Chromebook is able to get one next year. I'm looking to, and I think that I can do that within my regular budget, but I think it just makes sense if we're having them and they're using, you know, I know Mr. Powers is here at the back, back of the room, he's, he's someone who uses the Chromebook cart in fourth grade all the time, and his students have Gmail or Google accounts, and it just, it just makes sense for the teachers to have, use the same technology that the students are using. And with that, we need to update the Wi-Fi, because they all run off of Wi-Fi. So that's just about it. I will take any questions from the committee?
I have one question. What do we do as far as support for the staff members to, you know, have some of these, like, for example, Ms. Cavalo's going to be receiving some of this high-tech touch TV, and, you know, how will the staff member get support if they have these boards and smart boards, or do you feel that they pretty much do okay, or can they just call you?
So you're referring to professional development?
Yes.
And so the-
With technology.
Yeah, so there's two pieces to it. There's the professional development piece, which just this, Pat, one of the last, the last PD Day, I believe, we did some professional development on a new software for the teachers. We try to do some type of professional development within the same year. When we, the year we rolled out Google, I had two Google trainers sort of from, that I ended up flying in, and I used some of my E-Rate money for that. We spent, the whole day was, was around Google, that was a couple of years ago. They, those two trainers led courses, I led a course, some, someone else, and we actually, I'm a firm believer of growing your own talent within the district, because it just makes sense and it's relatable. I know we have at least two teachers here at the middle school that are Google Educator certified, so just that piece. But in regards to the, specifically the, the touch panels, yeah, we'll, I'll spend some time with Ms. Cavalo, or Ken or Kathleen will, and then once we start to go more globally with them, then we'll, we'll look at getting some, some all-encompassed and training in that would, for a PD Day. But for the day-to-day piece, they, I think everyone knows here that they can just either pick up the phone and call either Ken, Kathleen, or myself, shoot us an email, or preferably put in a school dude.
And last question. So regarding the cart model, I know that's where we are right now, and I actually do like your idea about seeing if, ideally, keeping maybe the Chromebooks here in the classroom, because, you know, it is important for them to be able to start doing Word documents online and Excel spreadsheets and getting used to, you know, prepared for that next step in high school, because most of our high schools, it sounds like, are one-to-one high school. So with that being said, if right now, the, are you keeping track of when the carts are, like, taken up, and if somebody is trying to put in a request for them, or do we have-
So, good question, and we're not, so essentially, we have it set up, so at least here at the middle school, excuse me, the carts are kept in one, so there's, because there's got to be some type of accountability for where the carts are at.
Sure.
So they're kept in, one of, each team has two, and we let the teams decide who wants them, and they, each team has an agreement, they, there's sign-out sheets, I believe, with them in both seventh and eighth grade, I'm not sure about fifth and sixth, but I'm pretty sure there's probably sign-out sheets down there, that they just work amongst themselves, because those Chromebook carts don't leave the grade-level teams-
Okay.
-here. At the elementary school, there is only one Chromebook cart right now, and for accountability purposes, that is kept in the Blue Wing in the fourth-grade team, and then the specialty hallway that has art and science there. So, and that is the only one right now. We're working on getting them some more, but it's a challenge because of the Wi-Fi.
The Wi-Fi, okay. Thank you. Any other questions? No? Great, thank you, that was a great update.
You're welcome, and I do have, I do have one more thing, if I could just have another minute. So either last month or the month before, I just want to address this, that there was a school committee meeting in which, I think it was our second and third meeting with the new television studio and our new equipment, and inadvertently, by no fault of anyone, myself and Mr. Green, who's in the control room right now, we didn't, we oversaw hitting the record button on the switcher. That cut out Ms. Cavalo's comments at the beginning of the meeting, and there were some negative things said on social media about they, so they, they's either, I take that as either myself or Mr. Green. So I just want to go on the record as saying, there was no mal-intent, it was a complete oversight, and I know Mr. Green, who's probably shaking his head right now, they are through the, through the glass, will agree as well. So I just wanted to clear that up, because it's just absolutely not true. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We trust you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Accidents happen.
Thank you. And as you said, we, the demands on technology, it's greater and greater each year, as you know, there's more testing that is coming down from DESI that Mr. Oliver coordinates with the principals and teachers, so I appreciate all the work that his department is doing very much, and I know as we continue, we'll need probably an extra set of hands at some point, because the demands continue to be greater.
So regarding the Wi-Fi, when, because that does, that sounds like that's probably one of our biggest hiccups over at the elementary school. Is that a capital, Jess, can you remind me how we can, sorry?
Miss, okay.
I'm sorry?
No, I'm sorry, I just, I wanted to just make my notes so that I'm clear regarding-
Yeah, absolutely.
-Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi at the elementary level, so that does seem like that's a pretty big hiccup. When, is that a Town Meeting request? Remind me?
So I would, I'm hoping that I'll be able to, there's a few things that need to fall into place, but I think we should look at, if the committee's willing to support that moving, that capital expenditure, that, yes, that would be a Town Meeting, that would be a Town Meeting request for a Town Meeting article.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, next up is the district strategy. If you look in the handouts, it's just an overview, and I'll be very brief, because I think the most important things that you'll hear from the principals tonight about the great work that they're doing with their staff and the schools. But basically, there's nothing new on this document, it's, it talks about our mission, our vision, where we want to promote student success for all students and opportunities to reach their full potential. We have talked about core values, and again, this document is a reflection of, from when I started, the listening tours, meeting with all of the stakeholders, and this is what has developed from that work as I've embedded myself into the schools and into these meetings with staff and parents and students. So the theory of action, and that's like an if-then statement, so I think that is an important piece to highlight here. If we work in unison as a staff and with our community to create thriving and supportive learning environments and experiences, then our students will excel academically, socially, and emotionally, and be prepared for the challenges that await them. And then we go into the strategic objectives, and I'll just quickly highlight those. Achieving academic excellence for all students, creating thriving social, emotional learning experiences for all students, and strengthening partnerships with parents and the larger community. And then again, this is nothing new, but you have our core drivers that we talked about many, many meetings, alignment, student support, as well as communication. And then, within the document, you see that there are strategic initiatives that fall under each strategic objective, and on the last page, it talks about the outcomes that we want. And these are just very general, this was vetted, this document was vetted through the leadership team, and then what happens is the department heads and the principals go back to their schools and they work on their school improvement plans. This is certainly not something that has to be voted on, but I do ask tonight, after we listen to the principals with their improvement plans, I really would like you to listen to the alignment of what they're doing in the schools and what we have outlined here as a district, to show once again that we are two schools, but one district, working on the things that we've been talking about now for over a year. Okay? So by taking a vote on this particular document, and this is a working document, so it's fluid, we can change it, we'll be adding some action steps, by taking a vote, it just signifies the committee's support for what we're doing here in the district. You do not need to vote on the improvement plans, but I think it's really important that the principals are able to highlight the great work that they're doing with the teachers in the buildings, because it is great work. But you'll see some common themes as they talk about, I don't want to read all this to you, but it should align. So first up, we have Mrs. Beck and Mr. Johnson from Acushnet Elementary, and they will be highlighting their school improvement plan tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just, I will speak a little bit of the process, and then Mr. Johnson will speak on the one-page, the summary. The school improvement starts, the process starts in our staff meetings, our grade-level meetings, at our school council. We look at the existing school improvement plan. We review it periodically, and we make recommendations for the next year. During the summer, I look at all the end of the year, the beginning of the year, to the end-of-the-year data. Galileo is an assessment that we use for ELA and math. Dibbles is another assessment we use for the early dynamic skills for reading. We also look at Symphony Math, we look at Lexia, excuse me, and I look at all of this data, as well as our demographics. So the executive summary page includes who we are, what we're doing, and how we plan to move the school forward. We then look at the district improvement plan, and we make sure that we are aligned. This year, we have our three core drivers: communication, alignment, and student support. We took a look at those three areas, and we create goals, objectives, which are measurable statements, that, things that we're committed to do to meet our goals. So that's the, how the process of the school improvement plan works. We then present it to Dr. Bailey, we vet it through our teachers, once it's been approved by Dr. Bailey, and then we will create a working document in terms of adding, deleting as a year goes, to make sure that it's a working document. So this is our guide for making sure that we have quality instruction, assessment, and curriculum throughout the year. Mr. Johnson?
So in terms of the one-page summary, we've taken our school improvement plans objectives and initiatives and condensed them into the one-page summary. We've pulled our three goals from the student, school improvement plan, and identified them as three strategic objectives. After we identified our objectives, we ensured they were aligned with the three district pillars: alignment, student support, and communication, and created action steps for each, and this resulted in the nine action steps on the one-page. Strategic objective number one really comes down to increasing the number of students meeting or exceeding targets on MCAS. This will be accomplished through aligning our intervention strategies, programs, and models by planning for increased rigor. For example, this year, we are integrating the history, the history and social studies standards into our ELA units. At the same time, we will be triangulating our data through three sets of data benchmarks to ensure appropriate, flexible groupings. And finally, this will be communicated and analyzed through the school council, in addition to regular meetings with teachers. In strategic objective number two, we will have established practices of providing tiered social and emotional supports for all students to ensure they can access and meet the rigor of quality standards-based instruction. This will be accomplished through aligning common language within the reporting process, developing a management system to identify and monitor students with social, emotional challenges, and by developing a common understanding of the social, emotional standards and expectations within all grade levels. And in strategic objective number three, we will be increasing opportunities to strengthen partnerships with the community and parents. We have already increased the frequency of newsletters from monthly to bi-weekly. We provide parent information sessions, such as our supplemental parent information night after open house, and collaborate with district leaders to develop an attendance improvement campaign and incentives.
Do you have any questions for us?
That was great. Anyone have any questions?
No?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And again, this is a working document.
Sure.
Being in education for years, lots of times in the past, these documents are often thick, they're put on a shelf, and they're not revisited. So I like the fact that they've come up with a one-pager, you know, a one-page summary, and that they're, it's a fluid document. So thank you all so much for your work. And then next up, we'd like to hear from the principals at Ford Middle School, Mrs. Sylvia and Ms. Wriggery.
That's okay, thank you. It is not the complete-
It's a technology glitch.
Oh, it's the Wi-Fi.
Is it the Wi-Fi?
This is not the complete SIP that you have in front of you, so we took out parts in order to match with what we are working with, to make a more condensed presentation-
Okay.
-right now. Right now. So, we have three outcomes: improve our proficiency rates. You can do it?
Yeah.
Thank you. To increase the percentage of students scoring in the meeting in exceeding categories for ELA, math, and science. Number two, improve the percentage of students prepared for advanced-level coursework in high school. And three, close the achievement gaps that exist between all students and those that are economically disadvantaged and those with learning disabilities. So, it was so great how we heard from Fairhaven and Old Colony and New Bedford. And the work that we're doing with those three schools is highlighted in this school improvement excerpt that you have in front of you. And number two, improve in the percentage of students prepared for advanced-level coursework in high school. We're working on that currently. And the conversations, I know that you asked, Mr. Baldwin, they are happening. Those conversations, those emails were not a figment of his imagination. We are emailing the principal at Hastings, the math department chair at the high school, the principal at the high school. And we have meetings set up, PD, you know, days set up already for the collaboration to continue. So, that work is happening, yes. The next page does list the five goals that we have at FMS. So, number one is to improve the percentage of students in the high needs to score the meets or above. Reduce the number of students who have been identified as chronically absent, and we're working with AES on that. The science kits we wish to purchase. And then number four, to improve the culture and climate of the school with getting the staff working together with AES also to improve the teaching and learning across the district. So, establish a consistent model of instruction across classrooms and grade levels that engages students in higher-order thinking and empowers students to be lifelong learners. The bullets underneath are what we're doing at the middle school. So, we're doing learning walks, the accountable talk, the false-science kits, the eighth-grade Algebra I track is what we started this year, and that's what we're continuing with. Ms. Wriggery and I go to PD trainings by the state with teacher evaluations, curriculum calendars with formative and summative assessment data. The teachers here at Ford have been working diligently since the beginning of school, that when they assess a student, they know what they're assessing them on, what standard, and they know that they're achieving at least the 80% mastery. And they're putting that all in together in an August-through-June calendar that Ms. Wriggery and I can look at and see the progress the students are making. The instructional coach helps with that, and then our CIA meetings, the curriculum instruction and assessment meetings. We are ensuring all curriculum maps, assessments, and resources are aligned within and across grade levels to the rigor set forth in the mass curriculum frameworks. The CIA meetings, we're working collaboratively with Dr. Roy and the FMS staff. Working collaboratively with the area high schools, with Fairhaven High, with New Bedford High, with Old Colony. Implement a data-driven tiered model of social and emotional support that builds students' social and emotional competencies of identified students. We restructure the special education classrooms, guidance classes, staff meetings, the clinical care team meetings. We have a multi-tiered systems of support. We brought in the Mark curriculum through Bridgewater State University for the, for the anti-bullying presentations. We're continuing that work, that collaboration with them going forward. Establish parent transition meetings for students transitioning to grade five from the elementary into the high school. And what we have on the first slide, fourth to fifth, we have the fifth-grade orientation. We have transition meetings held with any students who receive specialized services and supports. Eighth to ninth, we have the Ford High School Night. We have the high school open houses are advertised on all the emails that I send out. So, today, the Fairhaven Night was advertised to our current seventh and eighth graders. Also, on the FYI I sent out to parents last week, the New Bedford Academy of Honors link was advertised. It's an online link to apply to the New Bedford Academy of Honors. Transition meetings are held at Ford with all of the high schools for any student who has a specialized service or support. But we also look at the transitions that the kiddos do without their parents. We have the fourth graders tour the middle school in late May. We have the fourth graders pair up with a National Junior Honor Society member for a question-and-answer session. The guidance counselor and SAC from here go over to AES for question and answers. We hold a fourth and fifth-grade dance after school at Ford, so the fourth graders can come over. The eighth graders, all the seventh graders today have the Old Colony presentation. All the eighth graders visited New Bedford High and Old Colony in October. The seventh and eighth-grade band students participate in events with the fine arts departments with, in New Bedford and Fairhaven. The New Bedford High and Old Colony athletes support our middle school athletic department. And if New Bedford High was here, I was happy to say, I think we have two eighth graders currently who are participating in high school sports at New Bedford High this season, yes, after the tour of New Bedford High. We are prioritizing community partnerships that support aligned goals of academic excellence and social, emotional learning. Like stated, we partnered with Fairhaven High, the middle and the high, New Bedford, Old Colony. We have student enrichment opportunities. We look for community organizations and businesses to come in and give enrichment to our students. The Ford students help the Acushnet Council on Asian, the new, um, the food drive in November, the Super Bowl food drive in February. We have the Acushnet Council on Asian here for, for lunch, we will do that again. And like Mr. Polansky said, the annual STEM night brings in many community partners to present to our students, and they do take part in that, Old Colony does. Questions?
I actually have a question regarding, and I know it's just something that's on my mind, about the curriculum alignment. You had mentioned that, that's something where, where would you say, or, and then Dr. Bailey, if you're more appropriate, I'm just going to ask, where, where are we with the curriculum alignment? So, I know that's something that's, you know, you mentioned in your plan that we're working on. I know we're working on the eighth-grade algebra track for students. And I understand, not all our students in eighth grade are going to be at that level where they, you know, are even interested in going into geometry for, for freshman year. But I do think it's important to have a track for students who are, are ready to, to take that, that next step. Or just the same opportunities for other middle schools. But as far as the curriculum, when we're talking about alignment throughout fifth and eighth grade, are we at a point where we're getting opportunities for, you know, for an English teacher in eighth grade to, to meet with the seventh grade and the sixth grade and the fifth grade? Are we, are we doing that?
We were doing it twice a month at the CIA's.
Okay.
They have been cut down to once a month, but we have those opportunities, those one-hours after school.
At the CIA meetings? Okay, I wasn't sure if that's when individuals got together. Okay.
The alignment, all of our eighth graders right now will, would have the opportunity to take an Algebra I at the high school. It's not a...
It's geometry.
Or geometry. So, they're taking Algebra I now at the high school or in the, sorry. Right now, in the middle school, they're in an Algebra I track program. That's what we're looking to create, so that if they have the desire, and they've accomplished what they need to accomplish here, and that's where the alignment and the conversation between Hastings and then the high school at Fairhaven to see what the eighth graders at Hastings need to do and what they need to complete, do they need to take an exam in order to, you know, enter into the next level class at the high school? So, those are the conversations that we need to have, so that our kiddos are prepared.
Correct. And from, and I'm just going by off personal experience. I mean, I had a child who was eighth grade, math, straight A's, and took the test, I guess at that time anyways. There was a test that they had to take in order to be able to skip Algebra I and go into geometry. And, and they didn't, she didn't pass, which is fine, but there, it was multiple students who didn't pass that test. And then therefore, they did have to take Algebra I as a freshman and not be able to hop into geometry, which is fine, because then she, you know, you could double up freshman year. I just think when we have two schools, and I want to be the same for, for Old Colony, and I want to do the same for New Bedford High, when we have middle school students who are coming together to form at the high school level, personally, I just think it's good for them to be able to have the same opportunities. And to introduce Spanish was important, right? Because we didn't have a foreign language opportunity. So, the students at Hastings Middle School who are taking Spanish in eighth grade, or even seventh and eighth grade, were able to then go into the Spanish too. It doesn't sound like much, but by, if you have a very strong science and math student, by the time they get into that junior, senior year, they want to be taking those really high-level classes where they're going to be able to, to, you know, hop into a college level or take an AP class. So, you're at a little bit of a disadvantage. So, it's just, I'm happy to hear that we're working with our local high schools, and we're working with our, and we have the support of our eighth-grade teachers who are coming together to say, hey, we recognize that not every student in eighth grade is going to, you know, be at that level of mathematics. But if we have strong math and science students who want to be at that level, want to be at that level and can be successful, I want them to have the opportunity. And that's, that's why I'm so passionate about it, and that's really that simple.
And that's the goal. We believe that all students should have equal opportunities as any student in area middle schools. It's certainly not a perfect science at this point, but I will say, we've got wonderful teachers working together with Dr. Roy, with the principals. I'm seeing the emails come through. We've, they, these districts have opened the doors to us to come to their PDs. We've opened the doors to them, and I believe some of the staff will be coming over to us to have those conversations.
Thursday.
So, we're not waiting. We know there's a sense of urgency, because we know these eighth graders can't do eighth grade again. So, we're doing our very best to get that group of students to the very best we can this year, what we need. But we anticipate that it will improve over time with the great work that the teachers and the staff over at the middle school are doing right now in collaboration with Dr. Roy and the partners that we have with the area high schools.
Well, thank you. I know it's a lot of work, but I'm really excited that we're working on it, just as excited as I was to have Spanish, you know, come on board.
Our fifth-year Spanish here.
And that was a long time coming as well, so I just want to say thank you. I know it's not going to happen overnight, but I'm glad we're working towards it.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, again, we don't need to vote on these plans, certainly, but you can see how they're aligned to what we're doing for the district strategy. We're all sort of on the same page, but each school has its nuances and focus areas that they need to focus on. So, I would just ask for a vote of the committee as a sign of support for the district strategy at this time.
Do I have a motion to, I'm going to say, support or adopt?
Um, accept.
Accept, there you go. To accept the district strategy as presented? Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right.
Ms. Flynn?
Yeah? Business managers report, Mrs. Flynn, budget update.
Thank you, I have a couple items. In your packet, as usual, you have the budget summary for fiscal '20, year-to-date. You also have some other documents, I'll just quickly go through them. The budget update, the one, the one-page snapshot of our surpluses and deficits. A few things have changed since our last meeting. We continue to have some unpaid leaves of absence that are increasing our, any surplus that we may have in salaries. We have some adjustments to the high school tuition as a result of receiving the first invoices from all of our schools. And when we did take a look at them, I know Mr. Oliver talked about our residency officer, and you can see that we've actually removed two high school students due to residency. So, those efforts are certainly, you know, that's a real tangible thing that's paying off, because at $10,000 for a regular-ed student, each student that we identify and can prove is not an Acushnet resident and not have to pay for is, is money back into the budget. So, you can see that, you know, since the last time we did have some, we had a couple of kids withdraw from our high schools, and we had two removed due to residency. So, you know, that's, that's the, the hard work of Mrs. Shabet and also of our residency officer identifying that. So, we'll continue to work hard on that. You can see that we had some, in terms of the high school, there's an overall tuition deficit of just $3,000, so not a lot. Certainly not like we had last year when we had many more students, you know, move in, enter our high schools, change from, say, Old Colony to Fairhaven and New Bedford. This year, fortunately, that's not the case. You do see that we do have a deficit on the New Bedford High School side, but that just means that we have more students that are choosing to go to New Bedford High than, than in the past. So, there's, there is an upswing. And, you know, as Mr. Oliver said, I'm a proud, fair, Ford Middle School graduate and also New Bedford High School as a Whaler. So, I'm really, you know, happy and encouraged to see that, you know, more students are, are choosing New Bedford High School, because it was a really great education for, for me personally. So, you can see what I've kind of done, it's, it's, the tuition figure in our budget is really large. And when we talk about the changes, you know, there's big dollar swings. We see, we have many more, many less students budgeted, that we budgeted for at Fairhaven High than are actually there. So, you see, actually, we, we're going to have to move money from Fairhaven High to New Bedford High. So, down below, you see all of the changes that have taken place since we set the budget last, last, last spring. So, you can see, we had budgeted, you know, five more students at Fairhaven High than that actually decided to go to New Bedford High. We had six kids move in that, choosing New Bedford High, so that's plus 11 students at New Bedford High. That's pretty big. We have approximately 18 students now at New Bedford High, whereas the past few years, it's been under 10. So, it's, you know, we're, we're moving up. You can see some students, you know, were budgeted at Fairhaven High, they actually chose Old Colony School Choice or Home, that was eight students. Or they were budgeted at Fairhaven High, they moved out of Acushnet, 16 students. They were budgeted at OC or ORR, and they decided to go to Fairhaven, that's eight students. So, you know, it goes on and on, so you can see all of the changes that take place, and it really, you know, does impact the budget. This year, the, the changes kind of netted out between Fairhaven and New Bedford, and that's why you only see that $3,000 deficit right now in high school tuitions. So, and we also had some students that we, New Bedford had billed us for that were at our elementary, their elementary and middle schools. We're working with their office and our office, we identified them as not students that are billable. They are Acushnet residents, but they're not billable to the town of Acushnet. So, those kids got removed from, from this update that you saw initially the last time. You also see the out-of-district placements right now, there's a surplus of approximately $59,000. But that includes that $50,000 that we budgeted using the Special Education Stabilization Fund. And as I mentioned in our last update, that if we don't have to touch that, I don't recommend doing so. So, really, the out-of-district surplus is, is just around $9,000, and that can also change at any time if we have students moving in or moving out in these costly placements. So, that's the, you know, the, the overview of where we're at with the budget. We'll continue to do that every month, you know, and as we get more into our utility bills, which is our other large costs, and see, we haven't received any special education transportation bills from our biggest provider yet, so that's, you know, that'll really let us know where we at. We know the routes that we have and, and the bids, but we just want to make sure where we're at when we actually receive those invoices, so that hopefully will hit the next budget update. School lunch is doing fine, you know, it's the same, like a broken record with school lunch. So, we're having some less lunches sold than last year, but overall, you know, we're, we're doing fine with school lunch. So, that's supporting itself. The other items you have in here at the end, a quick facilities update. Now, we had an early snowfall last week, so it tested our, our snowfall efforts, our snow removal and planning efforts. So, what we found, you know, in the days that we don't have school, all the custodians work together, they come on the day shift. We also have the efforts of the DPW to help plow our lots. You know, we have a, more areas to plow with a new parking lot. So, it is really helpful to have the DPW come in with their big equipment and get those areas done, you know, fairly quickly. As a result of, you know, Tuesday's work, Mr. Corrigan realized that some of the snowblowers that we have, they became, they're kind of unwieldy and not manageable for our staff, and they're not efficient. Repairs for those are pretty specialized, so it results in downtime. It's not something that he can just fix quickly and get back on. So, what we did is we decided to purchase two more efficient and more manageable ones for our staff. So, even though they were bigger, heavier-duty snowblowers, they just were not easy to use. So, these will hopefully do a better job for our staff. The light replacement project through the Towns Green Communities money, we, that they shared with us, they decided to replace the common lights at Ford Middle School in common areas and in the elementary school, all of, mostly all of the lights in the classrooms and areas. Hopefully, if we do get this money again, they'll come back to Ford and finish off Ford. So, they said that they're 100% complete with what they're doing here at Ford, and about 99 and .5% complete at Acushnet Elementary School. They're just waiting on some fixtures to come in to complete the work there. So, when I talked to them in preparation for this report, they said they anticipate completion in the next week or so. And like I said, hopefully, if we get more Green Communities funds and they're shared with the school department, we'll replace the rest of the lights at Ford, and the idea is these are going to last longer, not require bulb replacement, anything like that. And also, we'll lower our electric bills, that's the, that's the plan. And also we'll lower our electric bills. That's the, that's the plan. So the big news that I have to report for, uh, facilities is that we have significant progress on our big toy, uh, repair. Uh, as you know, in mid to late October, we had a safety audit done, which identified some areas that we needed to take care of. First and foremost was the surfacing. So right after Thanksgiving, um, we had the proper level of IPEMA certified playground safety surfacing put in. And at the same time, they replaced all of the, the six swings with, um, new swings and all the accompanying hardware. So, um, right away when the kids came back after Thanksgiving, they had a better surface, a safer surface, and, um, more, uh, in newer swings. So the next, uh, thing to do is that we need to replace the, the areas that were taken out of service as a result of the report. So we have ordered the required replacement parts to fix the wishbone slide that's boarded up. The neck climber also taken out of service, the suspension bridge taken out of service as well. And the log roll needs some, um, repairs to it. So we've also, we've placed, placed the order for that in addition to some additional hand grips to replace on the climbing wall and some to have on hand if, uh, other ones break. So the parts are estimated, we placed the order last week. They're estimated to take approximately five to six weeks to come in. And the vendor said it should be, the installation should be completed shortly thereafter. The only snag will be is, um, I believe with the, um, neck climber is if the ground, if they have to go into the concrete puddings, that'll take a little bit longer, cost more, and also if the ground is frozen. So that's the only, you know, caveat with that. But other than that, you know, this is, this is really great news. So we had that safety inspection, we received a report, and we responded to it all in, you know, a month and a half's time. So hopefully, you know, for the springtime, we'll be looking at having, you know, a, a more improved big toy. And, you know, that should, with some improvements or some fixes every year, that should last us, you know, to get us through for many years. Um, the next update I have for you is our, um, to do with safety and security at the school. It's, uh, as you know, it's our ALIS training. Start, we started approximately a year ago, um, moving toward the ALIS model um, with, at the direction of, uh, School Resource Officer Derek Cathcart. Unfortunately Derek, um, couldn't be here tonight as he had a prior commitment, so, um, but I have been working with him on this, and so I'll just update you on, on what we've been up to. Um, ALIS is an acronym for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. So that's all the training that we as a staff received last year on all those steps. Um, they don't have to be used sequentially. They don't all have to be used. It's about empowering individuals to make the best choice at the time. And the trainers tell us, you know, maybe you make one choice and it's not, it, it doesn't work out. So now you, you go into your tool belt and you, you make another choice. And we learned that at our training, that we had our staff training last year, that, you know, we had some certified ALIS instructors in the building, and we had some situations that we had to react and respond to. And, you know, maybe our first thought is, oh, that door is really close, so I'm gonna go out that door. But now I go out that door and there's someone right there that's ready to harm me. So now what do I do? So this train, this, this teaches you to make other choices, that it's okay to make other choices. It's okay to make wrong choices as long as you keep continuing to try to, you know, better your situation. So as a quick snapshot, last year in December, um, you remember Officer Cathcart presented ALIS to the school committee? In February two thousand nineteen, we rolled out the online training module that was made available to all staff through the ALIS Training Institute. And I believe we're going to, um, have some refresher training on that coming up as well. In March two thousand nineteen, the staff took part in the online training course during the PD day with a Q and A afterwards with Officer Cathcart. And in April two thousand and nineteen, we had full-day ALIS training drills for staff, where we had several area ALIS certified instructors here, um, you know, kinda teaching us and, and just having a real-time, real drill. So that was, that was a pretty interesting, uh, training. And also, one thing that they did tell us, it, it empowers all of us to have skills that we can use anywhere, not just inside school. Because sometimes you might have to be alert to a situation at the mall. You might have to, you know, you might have to lock yourself somewhere, or you might have to quickly evacuate. So it's, it's really life, life skills that we're all learning. So the next thing that we have to do is now take it o- out to our students, to train our students. So what we're doing is we're planning a parent information night prior to any student instruction. So we will be communicating with parents. We will be letting parents know and introducing them to the ALIS Emergency Preparedness Strategy with these families. Um, our goal will be to ensure that our families understand, you know, the Acushnet Public Schools' commitment to a safe learning environment and to let families know how their children will be prepared and trained, how we're gonna go about doing this. Um, of course, student instruction has to be made different at every grade level, so it'll be age and ability appropriate, and there will be classroom and parent resources. Um, right now we have an information night for parents. It's tentatively scheduled for January thirteenth. So we'll be doing some more, um, work on that very shortly, and we'll be getting some information out. We have some, you know, we have some materials that are geared toward our younger students that will be made available, um, during the time when we do roll it out in the classrooms to the students, so we have that. And we're also pursuing, um, the ALIS Training Institute where we received our online training, also now has a module for parents that we can look to purchase, to put a link on our website that will have appropriate information to communicate to parents, you know, that maybe can't come to our, our, um, our night on January thirteenth. And if we find that we need to schedule another one, we can do that. But this will also be a supportive piece to it, to give parents some other information. And lastly, under the direction of Officer Cathcart, we've formed a school safety committee, and our purpose is to give all members of the school community an opportunity to be involved in emergency preparedness planning. Um, the committee first met on November fourteenth and included parents, staff, and administration. And our next meeting is actually scheduled for this week, um, on Thursday, December twelfth, I believe, at three fifteen. So we'll be talking more about our parent information night then, and I would, um, assume that after that, we'll be getting some information out about that. But we felt, um, Officer Cathcart, Dr. Bailey, and I felt that it was important to, you know, introduce this at this point and let people know that to the parents and the community, that that's, that's the next part of that, that we'll be doing undertaking to help keep our students and all of us safe, you know, in the event of a, of an emergency. We hope that never is gonna happen, um, but it's great to be prepared in the event that it does. And like I said, it's, it's a life skill that everybody can, can, um, really benefit from. So I don't know if anyone has any questions about, about ALIS or about my update in general, but I'll certainly, you know, take some.
No? Does anyone have any questions? All right, thank you very much. All right, um, school committee member reports. Does anybody have anything before I open it up for delegation? No? Okay. All right, so as promised, I'm going to open it up for delegation. So I thank everybody, um, if anybody wants to speak, I thank you for being patient. Um, as we've mentioned before, um, this is a school committee business meeting in which we hold business, but we do open and allow a public comment portion. Um, we typically will take, um, what you state under advisement if you need any. Um, and you can feel free to email me at any time or email Dr. Bailey at any time for specific answers. But, um, just state your name for the record and we'll, and you'll have three minutes. Jen, will you?
Sure.
Do a time for me?
Sure.
All right. Hi.
Hi. Amy again.
Hi.
Middle school parent. Uh, tell me when my time starts, because I'm gonna talk fast.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I would like to thank Kristin and Superintendent Bailey for scheduling a meeting with me. I previously had to cancel due to illness. Uh, but I am looking forward to meeting with you. Um, my goal in meeting with you is to get some questions answered that I've been unable to find. So, um, I'm not the only parent who is in trouble navigating, you know, questions and coming up with, you know, answers. And one of the things that has come up is that parents are looking for answers to questions, and they can't make it to these meetings. As you can see, there's nobody here, and, well, there's a few people, but, you know, we really need more parents to get to these meetings. And one solution, um, that, you know, we were hoping to do is to create a group that can advocate for patience. Uh, I'm sorry, I work in, with patients, with parents. So, um, we formed the, a group called Acushnet Citizens for Education. Um, and what we're here to do is to listen to parents' concerns and advocate on their behalf as a collective voice. We understand that it's, you know, we have fast-paced lives and we want to make our children's education a priority, but we also need to manage our work-life balance too, so we're not always able to make these meetings or to meet with both, you know, people one-on-one, because we have, you know, um, work, we have schedules, uh, we have, uh, personal, you know, lives. So parents need access to quick, reliable information that keeps them up to date with current questions and concerns about our schools. We hope to educate parents about concerns and bring our parents together to promote positive change. That's what we're looking for. We want positive change. So in addition to starting this parent group to assist in parents' voice in our community and to help educate them, um, we're also, uh, putting out a petition for the community to sign. Now, this petition is asking for an open-form meeting so that parents can have the opportunity to ask questions um, that they care about and get answers in an easy format. So that way, um, you know, we can ask questions and get answers, and we can volley back and forth and get the information in a more streamlined way. Um, this open meeting would be made public for everyone in the community. Um, so if you're not a parent, you're a grandparent, you could still come, any resident. And we want to have this, um, open, public meeting for everybody to attend so that we can all learn about concerns that we have, solutions, talk about problems, and get to the root of what, you know, might be causing some of the issues with, um, you know, like the teacher's contract or, you know, changes that are being made in the district that people aren't happy with. So the petition is available on the Acushnet Citizens for Education Facebook page. And we're also gonna be out there in the community to get, um, signatures from parents and residents at various locations. And we're just calling on all parents and residents to lean forward and step up and try to be part of the process to ensure that our children have the best school district um, and that we continue to provide exceptional academic success, which I'm sure we're all striving to do, because I'm hearing a lot of good things. Um, I believe that we all, teachers, school committee members, superintendents, parents, we all have the same goals. We all want what's best for our children. And so if I can help, if we can all help with the Acushnet Citizens for Education group to help be the voice for parents that can't get here today, I hope that we can bring some benefit. So, um, I thank you for your time, and I hope I didn't go over. I may get three minutes.
Just made it. Thank you.
I think that that's great.
Thank you. Does anyone else, would anyone else like to speak? Oh, okay. Well, thank you very much. And in the meantime, I do hope that, um, I do hope like a meeting like today, there was a lot of information given today. There's a lot of great information at our meetings. Um, so it is important that parents and faculty and staff, and, and if you can't make it here, it is important that you go online that the meetings are posted, because we really don't have a meeting just to have a meeting. I feel like we work very hard as a committee. Um, we're doing workshops together as a committee. I feel like we're working really hard to make sure that we stay focused on our goals, keeping things in alignment, um, working on off of what Dr. Bailey learnt when she came on board and, and all of the work she put together in her, in her plan. So I feel like we are really having some really good quality meetings in which we have technology updates and we have budget updates. And we are talking about, you know, our open budget meetings are, are going to be happening. And those meetings are posted well in advance. Those meetings are available, so if parents could put them in their calendar, it's important that they, they do show up. We're gonna be going to selectmen meetings, and the selectmen will be coming here to have their meeting with us. So we do have a lot of current meetings now, and I, I really wish there was a better way. But in the meantime, if parents need to ask specific questions to their building administrators, if they have a, a teacher question or a classroom question, I, I ask that they do. I mean, I'm a parent of four children. I've, know how to send an email out and ask those, you know, great questions of what's going on in, you know, in seventh grade English, or, or how can I work on this? And I, I, you know, Kristen, you know, Mrs. Flynn's available for budget, um, you know, Dr. Bailey. So I know it's not, these meetings aren't always easy, and as you can tell, I wish more people would come here to our meetings. Um, but at least they're publicized, they're on cable TV, um, and we really have solid presentations that we really try to get done. So, and any suggestions, feel free to say, oh, I'd like to hear about this. We can talk about it as a committee. So we're, we're trying. So, um, with that being said, I, anybody else wanna say anything? Nope? Okay. So I will have a motion to adjourn, which I think has been a great meeting. Motion? Second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Aye.